I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here.
Now, we have a proclamation, and Councilmember Johnson is going to read that.
It's a proclamation of the Fortuna City Council in recognition of General Aviation Appreciation Month. Whereas the city of Fortuna and the state of California has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas general aviation and the Roanokeville Airport have a significant economic impact on the city of Fortuna, and whereas the PricewaterhouseCoopers study contribution of general aviation to the U.S. economy found that general aviation airports in the state support an annual economic impact of over $32.7 billion, over 148,000 jobs, and a total payroll of over $11.3 billion. Whereas according to the 2018 Aviation in California Fact Sheet, the state has 214 public-use airports serving general aviation, and according to the FAA, these airports serve almost 69,000 pilots and 25,000 registered aircraft. Whereas according to the FAA, the state is home to 555 repair stations, 65 FAA-approved pilot schools, over 25,000 student pilots, and over 10,000 flight instructors. And whereas general aviation not only supports California's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency, medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, disaster relief, and investments in sustainable fuels and technologies, and investments in innovative experimental technology like vertical takeoff and landing vehicles, and by transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas the United States faces a shortage of aviation professionals, leaders should invest in this critical infrastructure to ensure future economic growth and our next generation of aviation professionals and pilots. Now therefore, Tammy Trent, Mayor of the city of Fortuna, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as General Aviation Appreciation Month. Sign this 20th day of March 2023. And I believe we have someone online to receive.
Mr. Fong, are you joining us tonight for the proclamation?
Well, not at this time, but.
Yes, I am here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fong. We appreciate everything that.
Thank you so much.
Aviation does.
Would you like to say a few words?
Just that we appreciate you recognizing this month and working with us to further educate people about how important general aviation is and that your local airport is important, and so we do appreciate being able to highlight all these things.
Thank you, and we'll make sure that you get this proclamation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we have oral comments from the public. Anybody from the public can speak on anything that's not on the agenda. I have one item. It's a letter that we received in the mail. Small writing. Dear Mayor Tammy Trent, Mike Johnson, Kyle Conley, Mike Losi, and Chris Mobley, we wanted to let you all know how much we appreciate all of you doing, all the things you're doing for the city. We are in favor of the anti-camping ordinance you just passed. We are also in favor of the right to use police dogs for our officers. We both have lived in Fortuna all of our lives. Our city is a great place to live. We live behind the park, and our park and recreation department is amazing. Because of them, our parks are still safe and a fun place for all to enjoy. I know this job is not an easy one, but keep up the good work. Your fans, Dennis and Doris Miller. So I wanted everybody to know they wrote a nice letter to us. Our next item on the agenda is a consent calendar. We have 10 items on the consent calendar. City council minutes, administrative department report, community department report, finance department report, park and recreation report, police department report, public works report, River Lodge report, report of dispersments, and approve the cost-share agreement with Fortuna Mill Commerce Center LLC, and approve supplemental budget request for $63,000 to provide additional planning assistance for the mill site-specific plan. Anybody want to pull any of those?
Jay, please.
Anyone else? No, okay, go ahead.
This agreement between Fortuna Mill Commerce Center and the city is a perfect example of how the city of Fortuna can cooperate and can help and work with a developer that comes in and wants to really do a fine project. I think this is an example that will be passed on to future developers to look at and see that the city is willing to work with developers that, you know, want to come in and make some exciting things happen. So I congratulate the city for moving forward on this, as well as the owner of Fortuna Mill Commerce Center. That's all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
Sue, I'll just quickly agree with what Mike said. I think the benefits for Fortuna are just not even, you don't even realize how much the benefits can be until things start getting built out and you start seeing those jobs and those tenants start coming in. Vince Rizzo has just been so easy to work with so far. He's partnered with the city, he's partnered with Land Construction, actually it's Ron and I, just reaching out to us and letting us know, you know. Anyway, he's been so far good to work with, and I think that having that person come into the city versus having him before is just going to be an outstanding benefit to the city. I'm really excited, so, thanks.
Thank you, Sue. Do we have a, I guess nobody else wants anything?
Do we need to have her come up and repeat that now that?
Okay, we'll close public comment.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on. Okay, city council business. Public hearing to consider adopting adoption of mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact, mitigate monitoring and reporting program, and approve approval of the Kenmar and U.S. 101 interchange project, lead agency project, proponent city of Fortuna, location Kenmar Road, and U.S. 101 interchange, resolution 2023-08. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yeah, so Liz, did you want to introduce the item? And I think Liz Shory, our deputy director of community development, and Brendan Byrd will be providing the staff report.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, we're really happy to be at this point, bringing this project before you, and I'm really happy to be involved in it. I kind of came in at the last phase, that's the environmental review part, and, you know, I know the city engineering department and the city manager have been really involved in this for the last couple of years, and I think you're going to, when you see the images, it's really, you know, significant, impressive project. So the engineering department is going to make the presentation on the project itself, the Kenmar Road and the U.S. 101 interchange improvements, and then I'll follow up with the environmental discussion. There are two, basically two different actions, the approval, or the, first, the adoption of the initial study, mitigated negative declaration, and then the approval of the project itself, so, but they are in the one resolution. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brendan, I believe.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, I have a PowerPoint up here. I believe it's sharing across screens, but we'll hope for that. Okay, so, Honorable Mayor and City Council, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to, as Liz said, present the current 30% design for the Kenmar Road and U.S. Highway 101 interchange improvement project. So before handing the floor back to Liz to speak about the initial study, which we're also here to speak about this evening, I wanted to take a moment and talk about the project as a whole, and talk a little bit about how we arrived at the current proposed design for the project. So here to assist me tonight is Josh Wolfe with GHD. He is the city's consulting engineering project manager for the Kenmar and actually for the city's 12th Street interchange project as well. And also here tonight is Andrea Hilton, who's the project's environmental lead, and she's the major force behind the initial study that will be discussed here shortly. So although I imagine most of us are pretty familiar with the Kenmar interchange here in Fortuna, I wanted to start out with a quick refresher on the general extent and location of the project. As shown here in the map, the Kenmar interchange is the southernmost interchange the city has with U.S. Highway 101, and it's also by far and away the city's busiest interchange with the freeway. As you can also see, Highway 101 bisects the city, and specifically the Riverwalk area, and therefore this interchange and our interchanges in general play a key role in allowing access to and from various parts of the city. Moving down here to the ground, here are some photos of the existing conditions of the Kenmar interchange, and these photos really highlight some of the bigger issues that are present with the current arrangement. First, as shown above, the interchange is currently only partially stop-controlled, and therefore movements and traffic flow with the interchanges tend to be difficult, inefficient, and somewhat questionable at times. Additionally, there are numerous other driveways and roads entering the interchange area that increases the difficulty of traffic and flow, traffic flow, and it makes the situation on the ground somewhat confusing for drivers, especially if it's the first time they've come into town. As shown in the photos below, the existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities currently amount to goat trails, so that's great, and folks who choose to navigate through these areas often have to do so and exercise a tremendous amount of caution. The lack of non-motorized facilities across the interchange essentially necessitates that people need to get in their car to go to and from various sides of the city. So after formally identifying the traffic issue at Kenmar, and specifically the interchange and the 2010 general plan, staff through the years have undertaken a number of technical studies to identify projects that could address issues currently at the city's interchanges, and specifically Kenmar. Previous studies have included the 2014 John Campbell Memorial Greenway Master Plan, the 2016 Complete Streets Connectivity Study, the 2017 Kenmar Interchange Project Study Report, and the 2021 Local Road Safety Plan. In each of these studies, the goal of any project at the interchange has remained unchanged, with a focus on simplifying traffic operations and navigation, reducing congestion and minimizing conflict points and increasing safety, and providing for local and regional bicycle and pedestrian facilities through the interchanges to connect the city. One of the key studies performed early on was the 2016 Complete Streets Connectivity Study, which focused on developing potential project designs that could address issues at the interchange. As part of the study, concept-level layouts and traffic operation models were developed, and as shown here, three concept design layouts were ultimately developed. These include, this included installing signalized intersections, and then looking at either a double or a triple roundabout. Ultimately, the preferred design alternative selected for further development was the double, or what we sometimes call the dog bone roundabout, as it offered the highest level of traffic flow for the longest period of time into the future, and it could be delivered at the lowest cost. So with the preferred design alternative identified, staff were able to obtain grant funding in 2018 to complete the project approval and environmental documentation phase of work, which is what we are currently working on now. As the city embarked upon preliminary design, we entered into a cooperative agreement with Caltrans, who is acting in an oversight role for this project, given that the majority of these facilities are in state right-of-way. In 2022, the city released a request for proposals, and ultimately selected GHD to act as the engineering design and environmental consultant for the project. Over the past two-plus years, the project team has developed well over 20 design and environmental-related project deliverables that support the current 30% design, which is being presented here this evening. In late 2022, the city received concurrence from Caltrans on the 30% design that is also part of this evening's discussion and part of the initial study. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Josh, who is going to speak more specifically on the 30% design for consideration this evening.
All right, good evening. You hear me okay? Okay. Again, my name is Josh Wolfe. I'm a civil engineer, project manager with GHD. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today to present an overview of the current design of the project. So I have a number of slides here. I'll run through them pretty quick. If I go too quick, just give me the pause, and I'll have you to slow down if there's any questions along the way. So starting here, this is overview, obviously, of the project area. I want to start off by covering some of the constraints and challenges that the design had to address. First and foremost, one of the major issues with this area is that there's just a lot going on. Within this 600-foot-long stretch of Kenmar Road, you have three separate intersections. You have the highway and the highway bridge coming right through the middle. You have a railroad crossing, which is also the future Great Redwood Trail crossing, as well as the Caltrans parking ride facility. So I've heard this described as controlled chaos. It really is, because there's a lot going on. Next, I want to focus in on the west side of the interchange. So this is an aerial, looking at the west side, looking towards the east. So there's a few challenges, starting off with some topographic challenges, so the bridge embankment, so this is the sloping ground coming down from the highway at the bridge approach, as well as the bridge columns. There's columns on either side of the bridge. This really constrains the amount of space we have to work with on Kenmar Road proper as it crosses under the highway. Adjacent to Riverwalk Drive, there's also some pretty dramatic grade differential, about 20 feet difference between the elevation of Riverwalk Drive and the elevation of the adjacent agricultural field just below. There's also numerous drainage facilities, as well as other utilities throughout that needed to be maintained, and obviously some private property here in the form of the Riverwalk RV Park. Now, looking at the east side of interchange, this is showing or viewing towards the south. I already mentioned the Great Redwood Trail corridor, as well as the railroad crossing just east of the highway. There's also the existing Caltrans parking ride facility. There's an existing driveway that provides access to the former mill site. Just east of the project is Strong's Creek and the Strong's Creek Culvert, which crosses under Kenmar Road. And then immediately adjacent to Eel River Drive, there's a pretty significant sloping hillside, comes right down to the edge of Eel River Drive, and it's covered in some somewhat mature eucalyptus trees, as well as some other vegetation. Now, I want to just briefly talk about design standards. You know, the majority of these improvements are actually located within Caltrans right-of-way. And the intersections, especially the intersections associated with the on-and-off ramps, have direct impacts on the highway operation. So as such, all the improvements that we'll present today had to be designed in strict conformance with both Caltrans standards, as well as federal highway standards. The primary documents which governed the design are shown here. It's the Caltrans Highway Design Manual, as well as the Federal Highways or NCHRP's Guide on Roundabout Design. Both these documents include a whole host of design standards that must be met. Many of them are listed right here, you know, as far as design vehicles, design speeds, stopping site distance, viewing angles, truck turning movements, bicycle and pedestrian safety and connectivity, and the list goes on and on. The point here is that these are complex transportation systems, and as Brendan alluded to, there's been a whole host of studies and analysis that have gone into developing the design to this point, and extensive outreach and communication and coordination with Caltrans. And what we're presenting here tonight has been reviewed extensively by Caltrans, and they have given their concurrence on the current design. So next, I want to run through just the, a quick overview of some of the key improvements that are associated with the design. So shown here in the color graphic, those are the proposed improvements overlaid on top of an aerial image. For reference, north is pointing to the right. So starting off on the west side of the highway, you can see that there has been some realignment of both Riverwalk Drive and the southbound, excuse me, on-and-off ramps, and effectively what we're doing is converting the partially stop-controlled intersection into a four-leg, Now, looking at the east side of the road, you'll notice that there's some pretty significant realignment of both the northbound on and off ramps, as well as realignment of Eel River Drive. What we're effectively doing here is replacing the two separate intersections with a single five-leg, single-lane roundabout. The project does maintain the existing parking ride facility, although it is relocated. It's currently located west of Eel River Drive. It would be located to the east side of Eel River Drive. And although the parking ride is not currently used as a transit or bus stop, provisions were made to accommodate a future bus stop if so desired in the future. And lastly, the project also does maintain that existing driveway access to the former There are three retaining walls associated with the project. The first one, shown here in purple, this is just east of Eel River Drive and the proposed parking ride facility. This is necessary to hold back that sloping embankment that I showed you a picture of earlier. There are two additional retaining walls that are proposed. These are under the actual bridge structure. These are necessary to hold back the sloping bridge embankment to provide enough space for the improvements under the structure. And in the upper-left corner here is an example of what that may look like. That's an example of a very similar retaining wall that was placed under an existing structure as a retrofit. Now, I want to discuss some of the pedestrian and bicycle facilities associated with the project. So shown in orange, these are the multi-use paths or non-motorized facilities. Again, these are alternative paths for both pedestrians and cyclists. You can see it does, they do provide connectivity essentially to all legs of the project and all extents of the project. Specifically, under the undercrossing where the facility is very narrow, what we propose to do is locate this walkway behind the bridge columns, and then there would be the retaining wall that I just mentioned will hold back that embankment under the crossing. There's an example of that in the upper-left corner. The proposed improvement looks very similar to what you see there. The project also made provisions for connectivity for other proposed trails in the area. First off is the future Strong's Creek Trail, which runs along Riverwalk Drive from the west, then crosses through the project area before aligning along Strong's Creek to the east, as well as the future Great Redwood Trail, which will utilize the former NCHA Railroad Corridor from north to south, shown here. I also want to talk a little bit more about the Great Redwood Trail connectivity, and specifically the crossing on Kenmar Road, as I know there were some comments brought forward during the secret review process. So this is an aerial of just that east side of the highway. You can see the Great Redwood Trail corridor and the two intersections there. So what I'm showing there in orange, that's likely what the Great Redwood Trail alignment would look like if the project that we're describing today was not constructed. So the trail would utilize the existing railroad corridor, then cross Kenmar Road likely at a perpendicular angle before aligning back onto the rail corridor. This would be a facility that would be constructed entirely within the Great Redwood Trail authorities right-of-way. Now, there are several challenges and concerns with an alignment like this that I wanted to cover. First off, this is effectively a mid-block crosswalk. Now, although mid-block crosswalks are not uncommon, they're not desired, and that's because standard practice is really to locate crosswalks at locations where drivers would expect to see pedestrians, and that's at intersections. This is also an uncontrolled section of Kenmar Road, and sandwiched between two really closely-spaced intersections. As you know, Kenmar Road also sees pretty high traffic volumes at times, as well as high speeds, and there's also minimal visibility in the area. There's actually only a single street light in this area currently. It's located at the parking ride facility, pointing away from the crossing. So if a crossing like this were to be implemented without the project that we're describing today, there are several items that would need to be addressed. First off, speeds on Kenmar Road would certainly need to be reduced. The crosswalk would need to be enhanced for visibility, and there needs to be an effort to improve driver awareness. Now, the project that we presented today, I think, addresses many of these concerns, and ultimately provides for an improved crossing for the Great Redwood Trail. By design, roundabouts reduce vehicle speeds. They do this through geometric design. They slow vehicles as they approach roundabouts, they slow vehicles as they travel through roundabouts, and they slow vehicles as they depart the roundabouts. The result will be slower speeds at each of the crosswalks proposed. The crosswalks are also further enhanced. They're shorter, and their simplified crossings will be utilizing pedestrian refuge islands. There's an example shown in the upper-left there. Those are essentially islands in the median of the roadway. They allow pedestrians to cross one leg of traffic at a time, so it shortens the crossing distance and avoids the need to cross both legs simultaneously, so they can provide a resting point, they can look for brake in traffic before further crossing. It's a really nice safety enhancement. Other enhancements to these crosswalks could include the addition of rectangular rapid-flashing beacons, or RRFBs. There's an example there, shown in the left. I know Fortuna has many of these throughout town. And in addition, there is street lighting proposed, essentially at all of these crosswalks provide adequate level of lighting within the crosswalks. I think the result is that what you see here today, and what we're presenting, offers significant safety improvements over what could otherwise be provided without a project like this. I also want to point out that the proposed parking ride facility does offer some unique benefits and opportunities to the project. It could certainly serve as a trailhead for both the Great Redwood Trail, as well as the future Strong's Creek Trail, with improved opportunities for access, parking, and other And the other item I want to address that was also brought forward in the comments, there were some concerns that the proposed roundabout on the east side of Highway 101 would be incompatible in the event that the Great Redwood Trail had to revert from trail use back to railroad use. These are two examples of some very recently constructed roundabouts, both in California, where railroad use and railroad operations was designed into the projects. The rail here is the Sonoma Marin Rapid Transit System, or SMART Rail. And as you can see, both accommodated the SMART Rail system. We feel that following a very similar approach on the current design for the eastern roundabout, that the design can be, rather, the project can be designed to accommodate a future rail in the event that the trail needs to revert back to rail use. With that, back to you, Brendan.
Excellent, thank you, Josh. So I wanted to end here with a brief list of next steps for the project. So certainly, there is the immediate one, which we are here for this evening, which is that the council consider project and environmental document approval, which Liz will expand upon here in a minute. Beyond that, the project. Beyond that, the project team will be working to finalize all project deliverables that are included in the final project report to Caltrans, and Caltrans will finalize the NEPA process. Beyond that, unfortunately, currently, we have no funding to advance the project beyond the current phase of work, and there's still quite a ways to go on the project and quite a lot of cost. We are anticipating these projects costing between $20 and $25 million to complete. However, these are critically important projects for the city in our present and in our future, and staff will continue to advocate for the projects with Caltrans and the elected representatives, seek outside funding sources to fund future phases of work, and continue to engage in stakeholder outreach. So with that, that concludes our portion of the presentation here this evening. We're happy to answer any questions now on the design, before Liz jumps back in with a discussion on the environmental document. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that, having watched that area and pedestrians, bicyclists, everything going through there, and seeing what it could be in there, and having walked it, looking at it in relation to the Headwaters Trail and Strongest Creek Trail, and leaving River Lodge, working our way over there, this is a monumental improvement, and it's going to take some work, but it's going to be worth it in the end. It's going to be another, with River Lodge and the motels in that area, this will be a great improvement that will, has the potential to draw people in, because it gives greater access to bicyclists and hikers and everything. So it's a lot of work, but it's going to be worth it. Thanks.
Any other council members?
I got a couple of questions. But first off, I just want to congratulate Josh and GHD, congratulate Merritt and Brendan, Liz, and, you know, what a great project. I have to echo Mike's comments about that. That, really, the Mill Street project, that whole project, that needs to happen, but these kinds of changes with this interchange, as well as Newburgh and 12th Street interchange, that's imperative that those things get built at the same time, hopefully. But I did have, and the environmental review that was done, it sounds excellent, looks With the regard to the STIP funding, we're at 30% with just the engineering design. So does that $550,000, is that, that's the 30% right there? And for the remainder of the design of the project, we still have 70% to go.
Yes, that's correct. So we received that $550,000, which has got us through this, what we call zero phase of work. We'd have to go the remaining 70% to get to final design and produce bid documents. You know, that's the next phase of work, final design. We'd have to go through right-of-way, where, you know, we obtain all the right-of-way necessary to construct and to maintain the project, and then ultimately, construction. So when we say that it's $20 to $25 million remaining to deliver the project, that's to take it from where we're about to leave it, until it's a, you know, a constructed thing sitting on the ground that we're all using.
So with regard to the engineering designs, what are we looking at to finish just the engineering design? Is it, are we at $2 million, two and a half?
Let me tell you. We are, I can bring it up on the screen here if you are interested, but we are looking at, for plan specs and estimate, about $2 million to deliver the rest of the project. And then there'd be engineering support during construction, so there's other engineering work involved in that. But the next phase of work would be about a $2 million effort.
Okay. And I know that the city is currently looking for grants and other avenues to pay for that.
Yes, we are.
And then, I'm glad that the railroad issue with GRT was addressed. And I understand that they can't really move forward with the trail until we do have that railroad, or at the same time, that railroad set aside in the event that there might be future use of that railroad, which I doubt very much. But I understand it, we still have to make that happen. So do we have to put a new railroad bed down, or are we using the existing bed? And at some future point, we're not going to install warning arms or anything like that until we know that that railroad is viable, I hope.
Yeah. So what we have to be able to do is effectively show with, for the rail banking process, that the right-of-way can revert to use as a railroad at some point in the future if required. So we would look to continue to design the project and construct it so that it accommodated the current proposed use, which is the Great Redwood Trail. If it did get to a point where it had to, it would be made such that a new, you know, new tracks could be put down, new signal arms could be put down, and it could be done as part of a project at that time. The current project wouldn't include those components as part of them, and that's not part of the current proposal.
And the last thing that I had a question with regard to Riverwalk RV Park, once construction happens on this, a lot of businesses will be affected, but probably none as much as the Riverwalk RV Park. Have we reached out to do any outreach with those folks and let them know what these plans look like and what we're looking at?
That's a great question, and we really wanted to focus early on in figuring out what it would take to build the project and how to design it and fit it to meet all those constraints. One of our next major areas of interest is going to be to do detailed stakeholder outreach involved. You know, now that we have the designs on paper, we really know what it's going to look like, how it's going to operate. So we're going to have to, you know, do outreach with folks like that and talk about right-of-way and acquisitions that would be needed, and also start to think about in the plans, you know, the PSNE phases, how do you phase construction to keep it, you know, a functioning interchange in the meantime, so that we're not impacting businesses that need to have people coming in and out, whether it's the KOA or, you know, other uses down there on Riverwalk. So now that we have, you know, the real design on paper, we're going to be able to have much more discussion on those items with folks. So that's part of the next phase plan, with or without funding.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I'm excited about this. Congratulations to all you folks for putting this together. Looks like a great project and one that we really need to move forward on, so need to find some money out there. Thank you.
You just kind of went over a question that I had, so that intersection will be able to stay open during construction?
Yeah. You typically try and, you know, find a way to phase it to where you can keep traffic operations happening, you know, during the duration of construction. There's probably times where you do have to do closures or switchovers, but the goal is to keep it as functionable as possible. That's also one of the reasons that, you know, for this type of project, it drives up construction costs, because as you could imagine, when you're doing all these operations and accommodating existing traffic patterns, it does make the project longer and more expensive. But it's also important, because these projects, you know, would probably take quite a while to construct, so keeping operations open would be key.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Just another thing that came to mind, a long time ago, I can remember Merritt and I meeting with Caltrans, and there was a great interest in this project, because there's a number of Caltrans folks that live in Fortuna. And not just that, but when they did the Drake Hill project, it changed things. So, but they came on board, and they've been helpful, it looks like, from what I understand. And their beginning on board with this helps to get through the hurdles in design and environmental and all these different things right-of-way, a lot of things, and we're grateful for that, too.
Yeah, very much so. You know, it is important to note that, I believe it was in 2010 is when Drake Hill did close, which put more stress on this interchange and, you know, on our intersection at Kenmar and Ross Hill as well. When we kicked this project off, the funding we got from the STIP was actually not enough to cover the costs associated with, you know, to develop everything you've seen here tonight and all the other components. And Caltrans was really great. They stepped up and provided some additional funding from some various places they have. We've had good engagement with them, and I think they're developing more and more interest in helping us deliver these projects. So we're hopeful for that, and we're thankful in the engagement that we've had so far, so...
Great. Thank you.
Before we continue on, can I take open public question, or, okay, I'd like to open public comment for this section of it. Okay, seeing none, we'll close and continue.
All right, ready? I'm going to share my little portion here. Yeah, so in your packet, you've got the initial study report with the various environmental discussion points. GHD did prepare the document. It's a solid document as far as the analysis and the areas that are covered. I think you can have a lot of confidence in it. And so your portion is to adopt the mitigated native declaration, which is basically a statement that you agree with the findings, that there is no significant impact as a result of the mitigation measures. And that's included in the resolution, and also adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program that follows the initial study report in your packet. Maybe you've had it, you saw that, it's in a table format. I think there were 13 mitigation measures. And I'll go over those. This is pretty brief. I'm not going to go through every topic in that initial study. I just want to touch on, you know, the kind of the parts that affect your decision, including kind of brushing over the mitigation measures. Those also point to, I think, the topics in the initial study that, you know, because there was a potential for a significant impact, you know, those are like the more sensitive areas. I'm not going to really talk about the more simpler environmental topics that don't have any mitigation. Those, you know, have kind of a straightforward discussion with no potential for impact. So the purpose of SEQA, so it's the California Environmental Quality Act, that requires, before a decision-making body approves a project, that the environmental, potential environmental impacts are identified and addressed. It's really basically a disclosure document, you know, so before you make a decision, you're informed about the potential environmental impacts. It's also a disclosure document for the public, so that they know what's, you know, what decisions are being made and how their neighborhood or whatever is being impacted. And the project before you, the Kenmar Road project, is defined as a project under SEQA, and that means that, that's kind of what puts it in the category of having to go through this environmental review process. Basically discretionary projects, where you have the ability to say yes or no, rather than like a standard permit where you just go over the checklist items. That's where the project determination kind of comes in, under state law. So staff and the consultants, basically the consultants, and we've, staff reviewed it, but the consultants, you know, did the analysis and putting the information together. So they prepared the initial study, and its purpose is to consider the project's physical changes to the environment, and if there are any, to identify any mitigation measures, you know, that will reduce that significance to a less-than-significant level, so there's no harm being done to the environment. So the mitigation measures get put into this table, and they're tracked, and then the mitigated native declaration, which is basically a statement of agreement with the findings of the report, then is adopted. These are the checklist items that are in the, they come from SEQA, the SEQA guidelines. So these are the, basically, the checklist, you know, the areas of potential significant environmental effects. I'm not going to read through all of these, but these are the, you know, the standard environmental review topics, and these are in the Kenmar Road interchange project discussion in the initial study. And I'm going to, for the project itself, the categories where there's no chance of a significant impact. So these are the categories where there is, you know, minimal, no impacts, and so there are no mitigation measures. If you have any questions about any of these, feel free to ask. But these are the kind of the more straightforward topics. And then the categories with mitigation adopted are on the screen there, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology, hazards, noise, and transportation. And then, so I'll just run over the mitigation measures really briefly. So for air quality, that, air quality impacts would be generated by construction activities, basically dust particles, you know, tiny PM10 dust particles that are going to affect people's breathing. And the mitigation is really just construction phase, watering the site, sweeping, and just keeping the dust particles down. And then there's kind of a whole group of impacts related to biological resources. And these are the five before you on the screen. And these just really take measures to protect sensitive plant and animal species, including certain frogs and turtles, and nesting birds during nesting season, if any trees are impacted or removed. And then protecting wetlands from construction activities and replacing any wetlands if those are needed, based on the future final plan. So these are all really, as well, construction-related.
Could I jump in real quick before we leave that slide? So on number five, where if there are a loss of seasonal wetland habitat, we're going to replace those wetlands at a ratio of less than, or no less than, 1 to 1.2. How do we go about replacing those? Have we identified areas where that could happen?
Yeah, that is what would be done. So we haven't done it yet, because, and I believe this is why, these are 30% plans, and so at this point, it's understood, you know, that they're going, wetlands are going to be avoided to the maximum, you know, extent feasible. When the final plans are done, it may be that there are some, you know, wetlands that won't be able to be avoided, and then, in that case, they'll go through the more detailed plan to replace those wetlands. And, you know, that's where the wetland specialists will come in and work with the regulatory agencies and identify, you know, appropriate replacement location, and then go through the proper permitting. Did I miss anything on that, or is there a better explanation?
I can just quickly note that in the ISMND, we actually identify both on and off-site locations for wetland mitigation, and there's a figure in Appendix A that shows where those locations are. So it is included in the initial study, because I think we do anticipate some permanent impacts to wetlands.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Andrew. I'm glad you were here to answer that. So any other questions on that section? And so we have some mitigation measures on cultural resource protection, and these have to do with construction phase potential to unearth archaeological or cultural resources or human remains. So the protocol for all of those are to pause construction while the appropriate parties are identified and consulted, and then a plan for moving forward is identified. And then lastly, some individual sections, again, for inadvertent discovery of palaeontological resources during construction, or identifying hazardous soils, there will be a soil investigation prior to construction, so there would be a plan to deal with those hazardous soils. And then noise levels, measures to reduce noise levels, especially as they impact the RV park, including scheduling work hours and locating, location of stored equipment. And then the traffic-related one is just relating to maintaining emergency access during construction, so that all emergency responders will be able to maneuver and, you know, reach any affected properties that are in the vicinity of the construction area. And this is what your mitigation measures table, the actual... And this is what your mitigation measures table, the actual program looks like. I didn't include it because there's just a lot of, I mean, it didn't include the whole entire, I just gave you the summaries because there's so much detail about, and it takes about six pages. But this includes the complete mitigation measure. And then additional details as to how the mitigation will be implemented, the responsible party, and the timing. It might be during construction or during design where the mitigation measure will actually get implemented. And then a check off for verification. And then the initial study mitigated negative declaration did go through public review. That's required by SEQA. In this case, it was a 30-day review. It was published in the Time Standard. It's posted at, on the website in City Hall and sent to the State Clearinghouse, where it gets posted on the State Clearinghouse website and also posted with the Humboldt County Recorder's Office for a 30-day period. The city did get one comment letter. And that is from the Great Redwood Trail Authority. They did submit a letter. Their concern was that, you know, the public safety with the, the roundabout, as Josh showed you, the rail intersecting the roundabout. And I think he did a good job describing, you know, the, the safety that will be addressed during the final design. And then they were concerned about other issues with the security of the rail banking. And then just the, you know, potential for jeopardizing. But the city's response is that there will be communication going through the final design. In fact, the trail agency requires a permit that the city will need to go through. So there will be consultation and addressing any of the concerns in, in more detail. So that's the end of the presentation. And, you know, staff recommends that you do adopt the negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, the monitoring, mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve the project through adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Liz. Does council have any questions on this section?
So because the adopting a mitigated negative declaration is included in the resolution, it's accepted with the motion to accept the resolution.
That's right, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Open public comment on this portion. C and N will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution 2023-08 and read by title only.
I'll second. We have a motion and second roll call, please.
Resolution 2023-08, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adopting a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approving the Kenmore Road and US 101 interchange project. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Well, that's exciting. We'll be moving forward on that one. Our next item is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. I just have a few items I wanted to review our upcoming meeting schedule and just report back on a few other items that have come up. Our next regular council meeting will be on April 3rd at 6 o'clock PM. Our next planning commission meeting will be on March 28th at 6 o'clock PM. Our next Measure E meeting is on March 21st tomorrow at 5:30 PM. And at that meeting, we'll be taking ideas for projects to be funded by Measure E. And our next Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting will be on April 5th. And just a few things to note. One of the most, it was kind of interesting. Last week, we had really high flows and a lot of rain with those last few rainfall events. And as the councils, most of the councils probably familiar, we did the Rona Creek Flood Control Project a few years ago. So I went with our Public Works Director. And Rona Creek had come up and stayed well within its banks. But it was interesting. It almost hit that point where it hit the overflow weir, where it went into the channel behind the high school. It's probably about four inches away. And, you know, and if, if, very generally, it's supposed to, you know, Rona Creek Channel is supposed to handle a 10-year storm event. And then if it exceeds a 10-year, some will spill. And then it'll go over to that overflow channel. So we almost hit that point, but we haven't seen that since the project. But that's probably the closest that it's been since it was tested. So it was kind of exciting to see and know that that was there in case the water levels kept coming up. And a lot of houses that would have flooded in the past as a result of the rainfall events were high and dry. So it was really nice to actually go out and see what those improvements were doing and having people be grateful that their house wasn't flooding in the last rainfall event. Another thing that we're working on, it's also in our Finance Director's Report, but we are working on the annual budget preparation. We're really hoping to get a jump on it and be able to bring that to the council as soon as possible. And again, you know, it's going to be one of the tighter years this year. So we're really going to have our work cut out for us with sales tax not increasing like it has in the past. It's going to be a tight budget, but we're working to bring that to the council as soon as possible. Also, some sad news. I was informed early last week that Sean Swanson with Riverlife Foundation had passed away. Sean's been a really key contributor to the city in helping to clean up illegal camps and garbage in the rivers and organize a lot of volunteer cleanups. He also helped provide resources to folks who are in need and helped direct those to services. So it's a big loss. Sean, you know, on a relatively small budget, he was able to really make a big impact and help keeping Fortuna an area around the Gill River clean. So Sean will be missed. And we're going to have a tough time kind of trying to fill his shoes in, in that regard. But we'll be thinking of ways that we can pick up where, where Sean left off. And again, it's with sad, sad news that we lost Sean Swanson. He was definitely a key contributor in the community. I wanted to remind the council and the public that the Great Redwood Trail Agency is holding a community workshop on Wednesday, the 22nd, from 6 to 8 at the River Lodge. And they're going to be presenting on their process for doing the master plan for the Great Redwood Trail. And they want to hear from the community and the public on what they'd like to see in the trail, in particular, the areas that are around where, where folks live. So it's a chance to provide input to the Great Redwood Trail. If you want to go and tell them how great those roundabouts will be, it couldn't hurt. Also exciting news, after a few years on the recent police facility project, we finally broke ground after the council awarded the project just a quick construction. And they seem to be moving really quickly. They completed a lot of the demo and filled in the pool and stripped all the drywall off the inside of the framing. So, so far, they're doing a great job and moving really quickly. And that's really what you want with a construction project. It's just, seems like very orderly and they're caring about what they're doing and, and moving fast. So we were very optimistic that the project will get done. So far, no surprises before the end of the year. And then I just wanted to relate to the council that we've had a few members of the community ask about what's happening with the Fortuna Theater. It closed after the earthquake. They did have some damage due to some of their fire systems breaking. And they had drywall damage inside the building. So I reached out to David Corkrell to try to, you know, see what, if the city could do anything to help get the theater back up and running, you know, and if we could assist. And, you know, very basically, he said, you know, the theater, you know, takes a lot of maintenance. He has a number of other projects and he's building other theaters elsewhere. So, you know, for him to take his attention back to the Fortuna Theater when he has other bigger theaters, it's a tough thing, but he, he very much has a passion for restoring those old theaters. But I did let him know that the city has a business loan fund program and we could help out with some low-interest loans. I let him know that we have the ability, if they reopen, to promote the theater through Fbid and working with the Chamber of Commerce. And then lastly, I let him know that we'd be willing to help pair him up with contractors and help him get proposals to clear the work if that was one of the obstacles. And so he, you know, he, very nice guy. And we're just, we'll let him know how much we care about the theater. And I think that went a long way. But hopefully, we can continue to work with him and see the theater reopened. And then lastly, the daffodil show is coming up this weekend at the River Lodge on Saturday and Sunday. So Saturday will be 1 to 5 and Sunday 11 to 4. Sorry, Kami or any council members, we're going to report on that. But I wanted to make sure that the community know, knew. It's a great chance to go check out some of the different presentations for daffodils that the Garden Club puts together. I know a lot of people relate for the donation. People can get one of the pots of the really unique daffodils that they have there. So it's a very great place to go check out if you want to see the daffodils and maybe pick up a potted plant of, of daffodils. That's all I have.
I just want to add to that, that this daffodil show is what funds the bulbs that we have all down Main Street and keeps our city so pretty. So go support them.
Yeah, and our garden club does an incredible job. Anybody who's walked down the street, especially in the springtime and even through to the fall. I mean, they're, they're amazing. And to have that quality of plantings and beautiful flowers on the street. Our garden club, again, does a wonderful job. So we're happy to be able to support them, donate to River Lodge for their events. And yes, please support the, the Fortuna Garden Club.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. You might have covered, covered it and I just missed it. The Redwood Trail meeting, where and when is that?
It's at the River Lodge and it is this Wednesday. And it is from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any, any future, future agenda items anybody's interested in? No? Okay, so we'll move on to city council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Conley.
Thank you very much. No committee reports to report from, but the sun's out, which is really nice. And seeing baseball kick up and down at the parks. And looks like they're going to be starting a project pretty soon at the basketball court. So that's going to be exciting. Just looking forward to not having so many vehicle accidents at the roundabout.
Thank you. Councilmember Mobley? Did I skip one first? Oops, sorry. Councilmember Losi?
You can go out of order if you want. You're Madam Mayor. Thank you. I did have the LAFCO Local Agency Formation Commission meeting on the 15th of this month. We did it, we, it's the first in-person meeting we've had since COVID. It was pretty, pretty good to get all the folks that we've been watching on TV or, or computer together and actually face-to-face. You miss so much over Zoom that, you know, you just don't, you don't catch it in person. It's, it's great. Our meeting was at the Eureka Chamber City Council Meetings, or City Council Chamber. And so I'm hoping that we continue to meet there. Normally, or in the past, it's been at the Humboldt County Supervisor's Office or their chambers. And the parking is a little bit restricted there. Much more parking at the City, City Hall. One of the business items was to appoint an alternate public member to the commission. And we appointed Gordon Johnson. Gordon was a city councilman in Riedel for two terms, eight years. He was a commissioner on LAFCO for four and an alternate for two. So I'm glad that we brought him on board as the alternate public member. We talked about the proposed budget for fiscal year 2324. And that will not see any increases. So the budget comes from fees that each of the incorporated cities pay as well as the county. So those fees should not be increased, which is good news for, for us. We did a preview of the draft agency profiles for the South County Municipal Review and Sphere of Influence. So these are eight different community districts that we're breaking into two separate groups. And we just did the first four, which were Breisland Community Services, Redway Community Services, Shelter Cove. Now, they're a little bit different. They have a resort improvement district, which you, they're one of the last ones that will ever be in existence. They've been outlawed. Well, I don't know about outlawed, outlawed, but they would be a community services district now rather than a resort improvement. And then we did We Out Community Services. So it's very interesting. We go through each of these, the pluses, the minuses, the financial picture and future issues, whether those districts are gaining population or losing population and the different, you know, issues that might come up. We do have a fully appointed commission now. And it looks like the votes for the Salmon Creek Fire Department, as well as the Garberville Fire Protection District, will pass. The Salmon Creek will pass by at least 97%, which is huge. It's a reflection that there aren't that many people living in Salmon Creek. But also the Garberville Fire Protection District will pass at about 78%. So those will be good. That is about all I have.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Mobley?
I attended a RCEA Community Advisory Committee meeting last week. It's, it's a committee that I signed on as part of being Redwood Coast Energy Authority Director, that they meet quarterly. It was pretty interesting. It gave me more of a snapshot of what the RCEA does. So hopefully, I'll enjoy that a little more than the main one. The last weekend, I attended a home-based expo at River Lodge. The, I don't know, I haven't had a chance to talk to Morgan or our Chamber of Commerce. To see if it was as expected. I didn't think that there was as many people that attended as they were probably hoping for, but I thought they did a great job with the setup. So hopefully, we'll see more of that in the future. I also wanted to say that I also noticed the police department being worked on. And, and I appreciate what your staff chief has going through, having to move back to a smaller area. So hopefully, it moves at a, at a good rate that you can get in there as soon as possible. That's it?
Okay. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Can try and be quick because the more I talk, the more I'll start coughing. But I did have the Historical Commission meeting on the 8th. And there was some interesting things come in with that. The, some older Fortuna High School yearbooks, a 1940s map of Fortuna. But it wasn't just a map. It was a Metzger's map that has a lot of detail on it, businesses and such as that. Interesting to see what Fortuna looked like. Also discussion of what the hours would hopefully be this summer and spring as things get busier. I would note that in February, they had the second highest attendance at the museum that they've had in the last 10 years. Attended a legislative update from the League of California Cities and see the status of some of those 2,600 bills our legislators are fervently cranking out. And looked at a few that we have some doubts about. Some that the league is going to support if amended and some that they're going to support. But we'll see how that comes out. Had an HCOG meeting and I noted in the Public Works Report, the, Brendan made a comment on our PCI Pavement Condition Index. And we'll see what it's like in 10 more years after this. It, it did increase. And that's a good planning tool to have to, so you know what your road conditions are like. You can plan out ahead. We do have a great team that work on our planning, our projects and our maintenance types. And looking forward to seeing how we can stretch that pavement. Also had a Transportation and Communication meeting for the League of California Cities Policy Committee and voted on some of those bills. And most of them were support if amended. So we'll see where that goes at our next meeting. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Okay, I had a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting. It was nice to meet the new members. It's our first in-person meeting also. Meeting the new council members from the other councils was nice to actually be able to meet them in person. But I have nothing to report on that meeting. And Measure Z, the county's tax measure committee, advisory committee, has just completed their advisory. And it shows how much the tax dollars have gone down. Last year, it was approximately 3 million. This year, it was 800,000. So there's a lot less to allocate this year. And the home-based business, along with Councilmember Mobley, I was there. There was over 200 attendees there and 25 vendors. The vendors were pretty pleased. They got a lot of business and a lot of people they got to talk to. And they even, I mean, they really enjoyed having that. And there was a, it was a pretty good turnout. So that was nice to see. It was well organized. And then I had a Cal Cities Public Safety Committee meeting. And California Assembly Bill 1708 would amend Proposition 74. This bill would require a person, yeah, would require a person convicted of petty theft or shoplifting, if the person has two prior or more convictions of theft-related offense, to be imprisoned for up to three years, county prison. It would become affected upon It would become affected upon the approval of voters. And it's not passed through the assembly yet. They're probably going to ask for a letter of support, which I'm hoping our council will support. I'm pretty sure they will. So when they ask for that, I'll get back to the council for that. And that should help maybe a little bit with the shoplifting. It was interesting. I was just in Idaho not too long and I'm related to a law enforcement officer over there. And in Idaho, they actually punish people for stealing. If you steal, let's see, a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars or less, it's just a, actually, I think they're all, it's a misdemeanor. You're actually arrested and taken to jail and you have to bail out. And over that amount, you actually spend some jail time and nothing in their stores are locked up. Kind of is amazing. My other item is March 29th marks the 50th anniversary of the day that the last U.S. military personnel left South Vietnam. The Eel River Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution and the Veterans of Foreign War post 2207 invite veterans, their families and the community to join them in celebrating and honoring the service and sacrifice of all those who served. And this will be held Wednesday, March 29th at 4:30 at Sunrise Cemetery. So hopefully they'll have a good turnout to, to honor all of those. And I think that was all on mine. And we have a closed, closed session item.
Can I add one more thing to mine real quick?
Yes.
Sorry, just letting you know, I won't be at the next meeting. We'll be going road permitting down to San Francisco for follow-up, so.
Okay. We have a closed session item tonight. And that is public employment pursuit, Section 54957 of the California Government Code Title Police Officer. Does anybody have any comments on our closed session item? If none, can we have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Thank you. Thank you all for coming.